Oh, you do? Oh, nice.
He decided to trade his end, well, he got...
He had one before, right?
Yeah, he did. He bought it for sixty-eight and he got sixty-two for it. He had it for a year or so.
That's not bad.
There was no sense in not buying it.
Okay. Where'd he get the truck from?
And then I called the next day and they'd already sold his truck.
Oh, really?
Yes. I said, "I should've asked for it, but I didn't think about it."
We're not ready. I'm sorting, I'm not in a big hurry, because that trailer's not done yet.
I got you.
Hey, ma'am. Okay. All right, everybody take your seats. We're about ready to start. All right, so at six oh two, I call this meeting to Saginaw City Council order. Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Item two is the invocation. For that, Reverend Michael Orr. Welcome, sir.
Shall we pray? Righteous and loving heavenly Father, we're so very grateful that you love us so much, that you made us in your image, that you bless us each and every day. We thank you for this wonderful community. We thank you for all the leaders who behind the scenes do so many things to keep our community running, to keep us safe, to keep us healthy, and to keep us strong. We pray, Lord, for all of those who face dangers here and there each day, policemen and firemen, and those who continue to serve our community. Please keep all of our first responders safe, be with their families and watch over them in all that they do, give them comfort and peace each day. Father, be with our teachers and our staff at all the schools in this community, and I pray a blessing on them, that you would help them in this challenging time to be able to educate and teach our young, to train and prepare them for fruitful life. And please keep us to, keep the environment, Father, a good and helpful place where everyone shows respect and honor to each other. Father, we urgently pray for those in the Ukraine who are facing such terrible fear and losses right now. We also pray for Russia and those who are caught up in this maelstrom of war and of hurt and pain and loss. We just pray that you would be with the Ukrainians and help them to be strong, be with their leaders, and help them to be able to weather this terrible storm. May you keep freedom alive, Father, protect them and watch over them during this time. We pray for all those who have had to flee, those who have lost loved ones, those who are suffering. Please, Lord, help us to reach out in any way we can to help those impoverished folk and those who are struggling and worried and fearful. May we be a beacon of hope and encouragement to them in whatever way we can. Father, we thank you so much for the city council, for all those here who hold positions of authority and leadership. I pray as they make decisions that you would give them a greater measure of wisdom and understanding and knowledge to help them make the very best decisions for our community, for all of us as our representatives. I pray a blessing on each of them, that you would give them good health, that you would be with all of their families in whatever struggles and difficulties they go through, Father, please be with them and watch over them. We are asked to pray for our leaders, Father, and we pray for them earnestly, that you would be with each one. Thank you so much for this great and wonderful community. Thank you that we are a caring people, a loving people, who are kind and considerate to our neighbors, and we pray that might continue, that as we grow and as we expand, Father, that we would welcome new folks into our community and be able to be, continue to be, a community that loves and cares for each other. We thank you so much for blessing us and loving us. Protect us as we face more difficult weather and situations in this community that might endanger others. Just please be with all of us, Father, and help us always to know that we can trust in you and care for each other. We ask you all these things, in your holy and righteous son's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Item number three is audience participation. So if there's any item you wish to speak about, please see the city secretary and fill out a form, and you may speak on any posted item. I want to let everybody know, I spent the last couple of days watching a lot of video of our events, and my audio is terrible, so I will try to speak into the microphone better, and I won't remind everybody else to do that as well. It is hard to hear on video watching us. I can hear folks speaking at the lectern very, very well, but I have trouble hearing council or staff, so keep that in mind when you're speaking, and I will try to do the same as well, so. Item number four is the consent agenda. I've had requests to pull... I had requests, where'd I go? Well, I had requests to pull B, C, and J, I believe that's correct, and D as well, that's right. So B, C, D, and J. So we will vote on, first on A, action regarding minutes of February first, E, action regarding agreement between city Saginaw-Tarrant County participating in reinvestment zone, number one, F, action regarding resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh three, amending authorized representatives for the text pool, G, action regarding award of bid for city's depository bank contract, H, action regarding resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh four, authorized bank signatures, and I, action regarding resolution twenty twenty-two dash five, authorizing the city manager to execute global opioid settlement documents. Questions, comments on those? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the ones I just mentioned.
Mayor, I might make a motion to accept or approve the ones that you just listed.
All right. Do I have a second? Charles, one second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. But to record effect, we do have a quorum tonight, a full house. Thank you all for coming. So let's go, let's do B first. So B is, and I'm pulling it up slowly, action regarding resurfacing of Highland Station tennis courts. For that, Director of Public Works, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This item's a recommendation from the Park and Rec Advisory Board to expend park funds to resurface the Highland Station tennis courts. It'll be restripped and have a rubberized surface, new nets, et cetera, et cetera. It'll be stripped for tennis court as well as pickleball court. Today, the tennis court is just a concrete slab, as plain as you can possibly get, so this'll, this'll help bring that up to a better standard. So anyway, if you have any other questions, I'll try to answer those for you.
Question, council.
Mayor. I was reading through the letter that we got from the Assistant Public Works Director, and I noticed that he said he contacted Master System Courts, and they said we've used them in the past. Is there a reason why we haven't contacted other contractors just to see if we can get a better price?
They are a member of the buy board, so it helps us expedite the bidding process or to bypass, because all of those costs are already bid and meet state law. We used it on the Willow Creek tennis courts and had success there, so there was no reason for us to seek another price or another contractor.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on B? If not, let's move to C. Action regarding approval of developer escrow agreement for future sidewalks located northeast corner of McElroy and North Knowles. Again, Rick Trice.
This is the skilled nursing facility that's on the corner of Knowles and McElroy that's nearing completion. Early in the project, as it was starting construction, we had a conversation with the developer that we desired to go ahead and just escrow sidewalk funds, since McElroy and Knowles were slated for the twenty twenty bond program, so it didn't make sense to install sidewalks today and then come back a year later and tear those out. So he, we have estimates on those sidewalks, and the rest showing an amount equal to that, and it's a non-refundable, so it'll, it will apply toward the reconstruction project to offset the sidewalk cost along those two frontages, Knowles and McElroy. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer those.
It's me again. I was reading in the escrow agreement that you're talking about that should be deferred until the roadway's constructed in accordance with the city's subdivision ordinance. Could you explain what that means, please?
Developers are responsible for installing infrastructure as part of their development, so, and that would include sidewalks. That would typically, you know, if you have an improved street already and you're putting in new sidewalks, then they would do that as part of the building permit process, so we are requiring them to put up surety or cash to pay for those improvements in lieu of doing it today, which again, for reasons I just cited.
So every, this subdivision ordinance applies to every new development that's coming in, the sidewalks?
Certainly, anything that comes in with infrastructure.
Okay. Okay, that was all I had.
Any other questions on B, or D, sorry. No, B. C? Any other questions on item C? Yes, ma'am? Oh, for this one? Come on. I didn't look at it. I assumed it was another item, I'm sorry.
My question's, I drove by there the other day, and they've planted bushes real close to the street, so what, do you have any idea what their concept is? I'm assuming it's going to be kind of winding, which is fine, but where is the sidewalk going to go north on Knowles so that when the roundabout's in, you can get across the street? How far down Knowles north do they have to go?
The designer just happens to be sitting next to me, but we, we will have crossings that will move foot traffic over into the park, so most of that sidewalk traffic will be along Willow Creek Park.
So that's part of this...
No, this is only the frontage that is the frontage of their actual lot for the skilled nursing facility.
Okay. So are we, the city's going to do something so you can go north on Knowles and get across to Willow Creek?
Yes, yes, there are sidewalks planned in the Knowles project.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, now let's skip down to item J. Action regarding resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh six, approval of purchasing policy. That's Jennifer Garrett, our finance manager. Welcome.
Okay, so the...
You can. Yes.
Go ahead. Okay. So the main reason to get an approved purchasing policy is so that we can use the funds that were received from the American Rescue Plan Act, which is about six million? Okay. And the only two major things that I wanted to point out in the purchasing policy is that purchases that are already approved in the budget that are in between ten thousand and fifty thousand dollars will not come to council for a second approval, because they were already approved in the budget process. And then also, a checklist will be provided to all departments, so that that way they can make sure that they're following everything correctly.
Questions for Jennifer?
Sure. I was reading through this. You know, it says that, you know, you don't have to come back to the council and things like this. Are there any ways to report these expenditures to the council? Like, maybe in a monthly report or something from each department, or...
Oh, like what's being spent?
About what's being spent, so...
Yeah, we could work on that, if that's something that y'all would like.
Because if, you know, these smaller amounts, if they happen frequently, they add up to considerable amount of money over time.
So you're talking about any amount, or just like the amounts between, like the ten and the...
Well, they probably come out listed in the checks or something in the departments.
If I could, yeah. So you'll get, you'll continue to get your monthly report, and those are line item by line item, that you can see all of the expenditures.
Right.
And then you also get the check register every month, too, as part of the monthly financial report, so that also has it. It wouldn't be by account number, though, it's by vendor.
Okay.
But, but what Jennifer's talking about is, these are the items that have already been approved by y'all in the budget.
Right.
And so we didn't see a reason to have a second approval.
Right. I understand that, but there's things in here that are not in the budget that are addressed.
Oh, you're talking about the small, under three thousand?
Well, there's, there's like a three to ten thousand that doesn't have to come to the council for approval, I believe.
Right. Again, all of those things would have to be within the department's operating budget, though. It's nothing over and above what's part of the normal operating budget.
So there's a operating budget that covers these things?
Yeah, they're line, the department line items. So for example, in the finance department, we buy supplies. In fact, we're fixing to make a big order of paper. We buy a huge order to save money on it. So that's already included in our regular operating budget.
Right. But if these are expenses, even in that block of money that's not approved, that's not in the adopted budget?
It is approved. It is approved as part of the operating budget and our line items for office supplies.
Some certain expenses are.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but not all of them.
All of the expenses required to operate the city are included in the line item budget.
Okay. Okay. And looking over here, and maybe Chief Craver could answer this, in section five, talking about emergency purchases. I know when I took my CERT training, they were talking about, and I may be using the wrong terminology, incident levels one and two, that the council is called together, and then we have to make decisions and things?
Mr. Mayor, so, and I may defer to the city attorney, emergency purchases would, probably the best example I can think about is if we had a main break, we didn't have supplies on hand, it's determined to be a public good or a public safety need, then that's the authorization. And I believe state law or state statute allows for that sort of circumstance.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, especially for, on an emergency basis, if, as long as there's some reference to an emergency fund in the budget, then those sorts of expenditures are allowed to be made, and they're not subject to competitive bidding.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to clarify, you know, that terminology for emergency, and like I said, we'd learned that there are several levels of emergencies, and some of the cities can decide, and some cities are not able to decide, so I just want to make sure that that was... Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on item J?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
There's one part in here, I'm sorry, I got here a little bit late, but that talks about if there's a mistake made, okay? And it specifically says that if there's a mistake made, the city manager determines whether it was malicious or not, which is fine. Also, I checked around, and this is a pretty standard for all the cities. It's nothing special. But what I'm saying is, if a mistake's made, whether it's malicious or not, is there some way that the council is made aware of that? Because it didn't, it didn't speak about that in general.
Yeah, absolutely. So these, these purchases at a higher range are not as frequent as some of the things that council member Big Horse was referencing, that are in the operating budget, things like paper and pens and that sort of thing. So, yeah. Yeah, absolutely, we'll, we'll let the council know.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions for Jennifer? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. So another question is, I will entertain a motion on B, C, and J. I wrote them down this time, so I wouldn't forget.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve items on the assessment of B, C, and J.
I'll second.
Thank you, Charles. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Awesome. Thank you very much. All right, and we have still discussed item D, and you have something you want to, you have to recuse yourself on that, Cindy? Okay. So Cindy has conflict on D, so she will not be taking part on D. So item D is action regarding interlocal agreement with Tarrant County for reconstruction and asphalt overlay of Saddle Trail, Indian Crest, and Delmar Court and Industrial. For that, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. This is essentially an annual contract we entered to the county with an interlocal, where we buy materials and provide traffic control, and they perform labor and equipment to overlay streets. It's a bargain rate, so it's a, it's a relationship and a contract that we want to continue in the future. If you've got any specific questions, I'll try to answer those on the, on the contract.
Any questions for Rick on D?
So you can't, I apologize, if you have a legal conflict, it's advisable not to participate. And the state statute actually says you're required to recuse yourself from all participation and voting. I apologize.
Thank you, Bren. Any other questions on D? This is item D we're discussing. If not, I will entertain a motion for, for D.
Mayor, I move that we accept item D as stated.
I'll second.
Valerie, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All those abstaining? All right, excellent. All right, I had a card here from Larry Shad. Is this an F or a five?
Yes.
F? Okay, I'm sorry, I did not see this in time. You still have questions for F, because we've already discussed it, but I'll go back there if you have a question, sir.
Yes.
Well, come on up. I apologize, I didn't get this in time.
I just want to put Gabe on the hot seat. I think we'd only understand text pool. What is text pool?
So when I get stressed, I ask my friends to help me out, so I'll defer to the finance director.
Text pool is a pool of funds that municipalities can pool their funds and get better earnings on their investments. So when we have our funds that are not in operating funds, that are in our regular bank account, are invested in Frost, I mean, in text pool, and that, that's what it is. It's just another banking institution that many cities within the state use.
So it's not a financial advisor type thing?
No, sir.
Where you're putting your money?
It's a, it's a financial, like a financial institution. It's where our, our funds are pooled and then invested for us in accordance with the law.
It's like a money market account that cities use, so cities are, as legal entity corporations and have a lot of cash at any one time, and because of the higher threshold of cash, it's put into a fund that we earn some amount of interest. It's negligible, but it's better than just putting in a regular account where we get no interest at all. It's also very liquid, so anytime we have to pay an invoice, we can get it very quickly.
So let's say you have to buy something. Do you go through the city council? Is it a certain amount of money instead of you or somebody else signing the check? Do you go through the city council and...
Right. So the city council has to approve expenditures of funds. We talked about in our operating budget, that's the biggest document we work on each year, and then the actual transactions, depending on the amount, Kim will withdraw from text pool whatever payment we need to make. So for example, our, our debt service, which is like our, paying on our bonds, the payments on our bonds, when we have debt payments, then Kim will do a withdrawal from text pool, make sure it's paid on time, that's one thing.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving forward, item number five, presentation of twenty twenty-one Texas Achievement and Library Excellence Award from the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association. Gabe, you want to comment, or is this me, or is this you?
Yeah. So Mayor, it's always nice to be recognized. Our library won, again, the Texas Achievement Award from the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association, so I'd like to call up Ellen, and she's got several of the library staff here with her tonight, so like, she has a, we told her to limit her victory speech to two hours, so...
No, I don't really have a speech. I have Christie and Angela, our children's librarians, here with me tonight. I couldn't take any more staff because it's a madhouse over there with the election, but we're just really happy for the recognition. This covers last year, twenty twenty-one, and as everybody knows, that was kind of a hard year, so we're really proud of this award, so, yeah.
Thank you.
And how many years in a row is this?
Um, we actually didn't get one in twenty twenty, because that was just too weird of a year. But how many do we have on our wall? I don't know. Yeah, five, six, I don't know. It's been going for a while.
Plenty of wall space.
Yes, it will.
I did get a letter, so I'll read the letter I got, it's addressed to the city. Congratulations, City of Saginaw, the John Ed Keeter Public Library of Saginaw, Texas, has been awarded the twenty twenty-one Texas Achievement and Library Excellence. Libraries awarded this honor met a high level of excellence in their programming and services. To be considered, recipients were required to demonstrate quality services across ten criteria. This year, only fifty-nine libraries out of five hundred and sixty-five Texas public library systems were awarded this honor. This means your library is in the top ten percent of libraries in the entire state of Texas. Please accept our sincere congratulations to the city, which values and provides quality library services and programs for continued education and personal enrichment of its residents. So, thank you all very much. All right, item number six, consideration action regarding award of construction contract for Knowles Drive Phase One. For that, Director of Public Works, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. This may take a second or two, because this is unlike design build, or design build projects, or design bid build projects, easy for me to say, that you're used to, traditional awarding of contracts. This one was done by a competitive seal proposal, which is similar to a qualification-based selection. So under that, which is allowed by, by state law, you have to weigh several factors that the contractors will be evaluated against, and make that public in the bidding process, which we did. Those are four categories that are in your memo that they were rated against. The law requires that we, or we designate at least fifty percent of that value to the price itself, so you'll see that we are recommending an award of contact back behind contracting, and instead of the low bid, which is X I T. The reason for that was, again, the qualifications and the package that they presented to the selection committee, which comprised of myself and Trenton, Nikki Elliott with Kimmy Horn, Randy Newsom, the assistant director, and Bill Hurst. Now, Bill Hurst, provided some additional background. Bill Hurst has over thirty years, almost thirty-five or forty years of experience in the construction industry, including inspector at Fort Worth. I worked with him early in my career, then he went to the private sector and was a project manager and a, a field superintendent for Conatschra Construction, which you may have heard of, and a J L B, which actually built the phase of Bailey-Boswell before the bridge. So you need... So you needly qualified to judge, you know, the contractor's schedule and approach to the project and things of that nature. So we were interested in such things as the resume of key personnel, and not just the resume of the president of the company. You know, that was not really important to us. What was important to us was the guy that was going to be boots on the ground. So the superintendent, et cetera, et cetera. McMahon is... And the reason that we did a competitive seal proposal rather than just a traditional bid was that there is a roundabout in this first phase, and the roundabout will be... It would be necessary to close that. It's hard to direct traffic around that construction area, so that is a bus route for the school district. And so our interest is that the contractor be able to shut that down during the summer months, when buses are not moving, and to get in and get out. And so we feel very comfortable with the responses that McMahon made of that, along with their schedule. And so we are recommending then that we award the contract to McMahon Construction, or Contracting, excuse me, in the amount of six million nine hundred seventy-one thousand four hundred thirty-nine and forty-four cents. And if you've got any questions, I'll try to work through those. I've got lots of support here. We provided a lot of background information, because, again, this is different than a traditional bid project, so...
Any questions for Rick or the Kimmy Horn team?
They answered all my questions already.
Okay.
I'm good.
Cindy?
I was just curious, how does this compare with the money that we had allocated for in the bond package?
It is a little bit over budget, which I mentioned, but remember that we... This Phase One of Knolls was a successful candidate in the county's bond program, so we will be getting participation that will more than offset that overage. So I think approximately a quarter million dollars over, or something of that nature.
It was about a hundred and sixty thousand over what's allocated in the bond.
See, I've got a good support system.
And so we're anticipating getting fifty percent match on this?
Yes, sir. Not right away, though. So we will finance that with, I believe, CO funds, and then if we need to dip in and borrow from the general fund.
And we'll get reimbursed?
Yes, at some point.
And the match is kept at three-point-five million dollars?
Okay.
And we're looking at a start and completion dates tentative? Do we have those in mind now?
Yeah, they submitted a schedule that was part of the requirements with the sealed proposal. We expressed to them that, you know, we'd be interested in them starting as soon as possible, and they returned that. So I think they're looking to start April or May, if possible. They want to perform, they want to construct that roundabout at W.J. Bose as soon as possible, which would be this summer.
So it will go through two summer cycles, so it will be over a year of construction. It's necessary because just to maintain traffic through the neighborhood and access, that that be basically phased by blocks. And so it'll be a kind of a coordination out there, but doable, so...
Excellent. Other questions, folks?
You're way too easy.
See, I'm wanting to call a bigwig from Kimmy Horn up, and she speaks, and she's here, but I guess we don't have anything for her. I hate to waste her time.
Well, she may speak on the following item.
I told her she had to speak if she showed up.
I have one. I have one question. What was the max you said? You just said that you said three-point-five?
Yes, it's three million five hundred and fifty thousand.
That's the max that we can get back?
Reimbursed from the Tarrant County bond, yes.
Very good news. Any other questions, folks? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the Consideration and Action Award for a construction contract for Knolls Drive, Phase One only.
I'll second.
Brandon, do we need to list the award winner, the contractor, or not?
No, it's fine. It's essentially as presented.
As presented.
Alright, so Valerie. Charles, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand? Opposed? Excellent, thank you, guys. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Trenton. Item number seven. Considering action of approval of change order number two to the Bailey-Boswell Road Overpass. Again, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. Dana, you just want to take it from here. This change order is, of course, getting to the final of the project, so there will be a final reconciliation and final payment soon on the project. All the work is completed, unless we have some feedback from the railroad tomorrow morning that would necessitate some additional work, but we don't anticipate that. So just to tell you how we got there, or got here. When we entered into railroad agreements with Burlington Northern and BNSF, both of those require the contractor to provide flagmen as part of their process. So anytime they enter or get within a certain setback of a railroad corridor, a flagman has to be on-site. And those flagmen, if they show up for an hour, they charge a full day, whatever. But I guess we anticipated that Railpro is the contractor that the railroad company uses for flagmen typically, and we've used them in the past on the other phase of Bailey-Boswell. We anticipated that one set of flagmen would work for both railroads, but that's not the case. They're kind of proprietary, and they want to protect their turf, so we basically doubled our flagman cost. So early in the project, we started to do projections on what our overage would be. We knew there was going to be an overage, although we did have lots of savings in the contract for unused quantities, et cetera, et cetera. And there's always some contingencies, allowance funds that are built into contracts, just so that we can, you know, we won't have to come back, you know, every week for some sort of change order with the council. So we knew what those numbers were coming to this point. Dolph Johnson kind of tracked finances on that. Of course, we got six and a half million dollars in participation from the county, and then we had funds that were set aside from other areas, and then savings from other areas. So two and a half million dollars, I believe, that were set aside in the general fund at some point earlier in the project to manage those overages. But we have now got to the point where we can't issue another payment to the contractor without an authorized change in the contract amount. Thus, that's why we're coming back with a change order request. So that was a mouthful. If you've got any questions, hopefully between our team and me, we can answer those questions.
Alright, questions on this item for Rick or the Kimmy Horn team?
Yeah, who...
Nikki, go ahead.
Yeah, who made the error here? I mean, we got... You got these flags. I mean, we lived by this railroad track for like ever. So I'm a little confused to how we could make that mistake. Was it us? The city made that assumption, and it was bad, or was it the company?
Good evening, everyone. Dana Schumacher with Kimmy Horn. I put it in the memo, kind of the assumptions that were made upfront for the flagman cost. We had an estimated window of time, one-hundred-and-fifty days, that the contractor would be working within the railroad right-of-way, and that was about one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars we put in the contract for them to do the flagman. And when construction started progressing, he mentioned, you know, the railroad companies required, if you're working in BN's railroad right-of-way, UP also required a flagman, which we never had experienced in the previous projects. That was a new requirement here. And then the other part of it was that we didn't estimate that when they were working on the bridge, up above the railroad, just walking on the bridge, or even above the bridge, before the fencing and rails were up, they would require a flagman. So that's something that we did not realize was required, that was not communicated to us. So that was part of the extra days. I don't know how many, if I put it in my memo or not, but that was a lot of the cost, was up there just above the rail on the bridge, a flagman had to be there, so...
I would say the contract had proposal item for flagman cost. I mean, so we... It was a pass-through for the contractor. The contractor coordinated with the railroad to when they needed flagmen present, and then the contractor paid the bill. But we had an overage, obviously, for the reasons cited in that account, so...
So, yeah, so I think regardless, if we had the contractor bid them out, or if we put the allowance in there, I think they would be wanting to get paid for the railroad flagman. But I think the overall project budget, it's within the project budget. So I think that's one thing I wanted to mention, is that the railroad agreement, I think it's in the memo that Rick put, the railroad agreement for inspection and all that was... I don't know how the numbers off the top of my head, so I might need some help from Kim, but we were going to pay the railroads up to, our city was, three-hundred or four-hundred thousand dollars. We're not having to spend that much money.
Yeah, I would just add that even with this change order and the revised contract amount, we'll still have roughly two-hundred thousand dollars left in the account. So, I mean, we won't have to borrow from other sources. That money was always designated and set aside and reserved, because we knew that this was coming down the pike, so...
So to answer your question, I mean, yeah, we had estimated wrong in the beginning, but we've been tracking it all along.
So is the overall bridge, what we estimated, whether, I guess, it'd be the finite budget now, are we over or under that, or on?
The estimate now is about a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in savings, and because of the cash flow, I don't know if you recall, but it's been about a year ago that we got authorization for y'all to borrow. So we've spent the full two-point-six million from the general fund, and now we're spending, as we're getting reimbursed from Tarrant County. If we truly do have a savings, when all is said and done, of a hundred and ninety-one thousand, that will go back to the general fund. So it will reduce the two-point-six million dollar share that the general fund contributed to the project.
So the project, what you're saying is, when we look at the overall project, of what we said it would cost, it's within the ten percent error?
Yes, sir.
So the next bridge we build, we're going to pay attention to this, alright?
Absolutely.
Do we have a date?
A date for the bridge?
That's the hundred-thousand-dollar question? Or that's the... That's the million-dollar question?
Six-hundred-thousand-dollar question. Let me just tell you, give you a status report, and for the public at home listening, I was speaking to the mic, Mayor. So, again, there are a couple of items that we have been waiting on, and we're still waiting to get answers. But tomorrow morning, we have a walkthrough inspection with both railroads in the corridor, and so that's the first time and final time that they should look at it. Hopefully, they're not going to find any issues. Hopefully, the bridge is high enough, you know, so we don't have to raise the bridge, but we still have to go through that process. So... And then finally, also, Knolls Signal has, you know, it has to be functional before the bridge can be fully operational. And we have been waiting for Encore to power up those lights. I was guaranteed today that the meter is on the truck, and it was supposed to be installed today. So I'm going to say any day now. Of course, I've been saying that for a while. I know it's like Chicken Little, but so, you know, optimistically, you know, I would think of seven to ten days, we'll have the bridge ready to open fully. And that's probably more time than we need. I'm going to bring to one thing to your attention, just that we're dealing with currently, is that the contractor, Weber, has made a claim for twenty thousand dollars additional that he wants to be paid for, for some panel replacements that we're arguing with him about. And we're going to respond to him later this week. And so that's kind of out there, so I don't know if he'll hold the project hostage in some manner, but it's our opinion that we will be able to... We control the bridge, it's our bridge, that we'll be able to open it to traffic, so...
Maybe we should do it on St. Patrick's Day and put a pot of gold down there at one end of it.
I like that idea, Valerie.
I think Weber has taken a pot of gold all the way. The contractor, so...
This sixty K that you got in contingencies, that's added into it. Are we confident that's it? You ain't going to have to come back to the bucket again?
I think we have plenty of contingencies, so... I said, "I think," okay? So that's my caveat. So my mind's not real great these days, but...
I mean, I think based on what we've been tracking, Nikki, to answer your question, I think even with this in there, we think we'll still have a savings of over a hundred thousand, just, yeah.
Yeah, which would be in addition to the...
To what we talked about.
What funds are...
Yeah, the cost of these flagmen, they'll eat that up just walking you across the bridge.
That's just one day.
I need to get in that business, you know, you just, you can sit in the truck and all day and honk the horn when you see a train. That's it, yeah.
Alright, any other questions for Dana or Rick? Alright, thank you, ma'am. Alright, so I will entertain a motion on item number seven.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the action regarding the approval of the change order number two to Bailey-Boswell Road Overpass.
Charles, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand? All those opposed? Excellent, thank you, guys. Thank you, Kimmy Horn, thank you, Rick. Item number eight. Consideration action regarding recommendation for adoption of the 2022 Saginaw Comprehensive Plan, Ordinance 2022-02. And again, it says Rick Trice on it.
I know, this is kind of anticlimactic after all that, but you recall that we had a public hearing at your last scheduled city council meeting, we had a cancellation in between there. So this item was continued to allow the council to try to go through the document and to digest what was being presented. It was a lot of information at one time, and so I guess at this point, Abra, Nasser, and Matty Graham from Kimmy Horn, and of course, Abra's with Peloton are here to try to answer any questions, so...
Abra, you want to come up? Any questions for a comprehensive plan for Abra? She's the expert.
Hi.
Mary?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to let you know how much we appreciate all the hard work you did in the committee from the city, citizens, and all of the ways that you involved the community before you created this document. And I also think that it is, as the name would suggest, very comprehensive. And it's laid out easily read and in different sections. And the thing I really liked about it was identifying the department that would be in charge of a particular item, if we decided to go ahead with it, and what the dollar amount, you know, the average dollar amount would be. So I just think it's excellent, and I appreciate everybody who worked on it.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Council, other questions, feedback? Cindy?
I too really like the book. It's, you've done a lot of work. I'm not sure I could have done this well, but I do have a couple of questions. I'm a little concerned about the multi-use areas. It seems like every time we turn around, we're talking about high-density housing. Why do we have to have high-density housing in all of these areas? Why can't we just go with, you know, single houses? You know, stacking people on top of people, you know, is just... And it's not a good thing, simply because I don't think there's enough emphasis on the roads and trying to get traffic moving, which in every survey that we've taken in this city over the last four or five years, that's been the number-one issue, is, you know, traffic's getting too heavy here. We can't get from the north end of the town to the south end of town in less than forty-five minutes during peak hours at times. I just don't see road improvements as a priority in this document, and that's a big concern to me. Cramming more people on top of people in an area where you have that type of problem is a concern to me. And, you know, from that perspective, this looks more like a wish list rather than a real plan, because I don't think we're taking the traffic considerations into high enough priority account here, in my opinion.
Yeah, so thank you for those comments. Like to kind of go through in detail, since, you know, this is the final hearing, or not hearing, but the final meeting on this. So in terms of high-density housing, that's currently not proposed anywhere in the plan. So the first designation you would have is existing neighborhood. So the yellow is proposed to be just like it is today, in form... So the yellow is proposed to be just like it is today in form, intensity, and character. So it's a very, it's a preservation designation. So no high-density housing in yellow. In terms of the blue, which would be institutional, that would be like schools, churches, city hall, that type of thing, just institutional uses, not residential. Neighborhood mixed use is your next category, which would be the pink. And in the neighborhood mixed use category, it says "A mix of land uses including commercial uses such as offices, coffee shops, bakeries, corner stores, or boutiques, limited residential, and park and/or trail land uses." In anticipated form, it has low-intensity development with a maximum of two stories. Just that statement right there, I think, would kind of, you know, mitigate any high-density housing concerns in the pink. But what follows the comprehensive plan would be your zoning regulations. And you could make zoning adjustments to not only limit certain uses, but also height and density in the pink at that time. But as it's worded, it's not calling for even medium intensity in the pink.
But there's not a lot of pink on these maps.
Right, so, and then in terms of the West McLroy Corridor, it's got a mix of land uses including commercial, retail, and office. Residential is allowed, but encouraged on upper stories if, if it is there, reserving the ground floor for commercial. Again, Main Street-type feel, and it says maximum two-story development. So not anticipating a whole lot of residential there either. But should it be in the West McLroy Corridor, it would be supporting some of the quaint shops and dining that would be in that area. But maximum two stories isn't gonna get high-density housing either. So in terms of that corridor district, I don't, I don't think that's a concern that the document would create. Now, if you came in and said that you want little bitty two-hundred-square-foot units in your zoning regulations, which I would not anticipate this council wanting something like that, then that's another story, but I don't think that would practically happen at that time. Saginaw Boulevard Corridor, again, residential, office, restaurant, retail, entertainment. This is your spine, right? This is your key corridor. And anticipated form would be multi-story mixed use as tall as four stories. So you could see some apartment complexes on the Saginaw Boulevard Corridor if you chose to follow up this designation with that type of development in your zoning ordinance. You know, what people are wanting in terms of commercial uses, shopping, dining, entertainment, that would contribute to a walkable environment and they would be, you know, very well done. Most likely, you've got some of that product coming in, but you could decide that with your zoning regulations. So maybe we could talk more about this one. Do you have, how do we feel about the Saginaw Boulevard Corridor in terms of intensity?
Well, again, you know, the, the four stories and things, you know, you're talking about a lot more traffic on the road. Saginaw Boulevard is horrible to drive on.
Sure.
Which means that cars are gonna turn off and travel down the neighborhood roads and those are not in the best shape right now. I see those falling apart faster than they are.
On pages eighty-two and eighty-three, we've got Strategies and Actions for the Mobility Element. So in terms of actions, the first one is to prioritize new projects for implementation of a five-year CIP. So that right there, you need to be updating that, looking at which streets are in disrepair or that, or that could be enhanced in terms of function. So if we've got it on the Master Throw Fair Plan as a three-lane and it's currently a two-lane, that would be an idea to prioritize to get some more function for the mobility network. In terms of Saginaw Boulevard specifically, I believe one of the actions is to continue to work with Tech dot on signal timing, which has been an identified issue even before the comp plan started and those conversations have been ongoing. But it says continue them until they're complete. So get the signal timing addressed, you know.
But that's, that's expensive, isn't it?
I mean, there is a cost associated with it, but it's a Tech dot-controlled roadway, so.
Yeah, because what, we were talking about what, a hundred and fifty, two-hundred thousand dollars at one time for the light, for each light?
Oh, I can't recall what the estimates were, but just, you know, we've had recent conversations with Tech dot again because we've had issues at the Longhorn Crossing of the Boulevard and, and, you know, the, the train complicates, trains complicates the signals along the Boulevard because preemption will take over and then you've lost your timing. Now, they have, they are still looking at it and still open to suggestions. McLroy, which was also, I believe, one of the projects in the CO sale that we had recently, they have a project on the books that, but COVID, for whatever reason, has delayed that progressing within the Tech dot offices. So that's gonna be replaced with a new state-of-the-art. They have fiber running down the Boulevard to the lights. So it's, it's, the sophisticated infrastructure's there. But, but again, it's just, it's, it's extremely difficult, especially when the trains are unpredictable. I mean, they, they don't run on a regular schedule. They can, they can stop on a track and block it for basically as long as they want to. So I mean, it, it's, I'm not making excuses as much as, it's just a very difficult problem to solve. And so, but we'll keep plugging at it, so.
So in addition to, you know, signal timing, we've also recommended that, you know, you take a look at these special consideration intersections that we've identified, which is a new component that you didn't have before on your Master Throw Fair Plan, which can add functionality to specific intersections and improve to and through. We've identified several new connections that could happen in the future for, to just redistribute trips. And there's, there's many, many more actions in the mobility section that work to address the traffic and connectivity within the city in addition to trails and multimodal infrastructure that were also recommended. So back to Saginaw Boulevard, you know, the Conference of Plan Advisory Committee did recommend that four stories be the maximum on Saginaw Boulevard Corridor. It was talked about even taller than that. And that's where they landed. That's what they felt was appropriate for the intensity along that corridor. They felt like anything taller than that would, would be too much. And they thought that, you know, at a key corner or something, four stories might be appropriate. So I don't, I don't know if you wanna talk about Saginaw Boulevard Corridor more, but.
Well, and West McLroy is another one, you know, trying to put in, you know, a town center area there concerns me, especially with the talk about the roundabout coming in over here. You know, you're never gonna have traffic stopping because, you know, cars don't stop at roundabouts. And I'm worried about people trying to park on McLroy. And there have been multiple times when I've tried to make a left turn off McLroy going north on Saginaw Boulevard, that I've sat through the light five cycles. Because I keep hearing that the road's not wide enough, but I, I'd like to, you know, once again, dispute that because, you know, you've got two lanes headed westbound and two lanes headed eastbound.
So it's, it's my understanding that that segment of McLroy is currently scheduled for, i- is that the portion that's going to be?
McLroy and Saginaw Boulevard, West McLroy.
It's part of the Tarrant Bond, right?
Not the Tarrant Bond, but the Saginaw Bond program, yeah.
The Saginaw Bond, okay. So I mean, that, it is.
But again, again, I mean, Tech dot is looking at that signal. So I, you know, again, it, it is, it's a timing issue. I mean, because i- if you have protected left turn, then you're delaying other lanes, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, the ideal solution is to have more lanes and have dedicated lifts and things of that nature. But, you know, some business would have to come out for that to occur.
But are we gonna take the businesses out to put in this new town center area?
That's not going to realistically happen, especially all of them. You might see some of them, one or two here and there, get demolished over time. And, I mean, it's, it's not a greenfield context. You've got, you've got development in this area, so it's not a, it's not gonna be a free-for-all. And the stuff that's coming in, you know, if you look at the pictures on page fifty-eight, it's, it's intended to be very quaint and calm and not, not to be intense. So if something comes in that's not properly sited or that has negative traffic impacts or is, is too intense, you would handle it at that time with that development proposal.
And, and let me just add that, I mean, the comp plan is not a, a set of plans, construction plans. It's not set in concrete. It's, it's a plan. And anytime that we have a zoning case that goes through or land use change that go through the zoning commission and come to you for approval, I mean, that, that is essentially amending the comp plan every time that that occurs. So you make decisions, you know, every month almost about land use. And, but if you look at the map that shows existing zoning in Saginaw, I mean, they, they have some pretty intense uses already by right. So they're, you know, would never go through zoning commission. They would just come in and simply provide us a set of building permit plans. You know, it's kind of the same argument that happened on, on Villas. I mean, they, they had by right to come in with apartments and, and commercial. But, but, you know, you were faced with a decision which is basically relates back to the comp plan. You know, do you wanna, do you wanna make this change in, in zoning for future land use on that property? Or, or do you wanna say, no, you know, that's, that's not our vision. It's not, that's not what the comp plan is reflecting and that we need to send them back to the drawing board, developers or, or builders, whoever. And so, I mean, that's kind of my soapbox for tonight.
But when it comes to multifamily, there's trade-offs. You guys get to make the policy, right? So this is saying it should be a maximum of this tall. And here's the list of uses that we would anticipate and here's the character that we want it to portray. This is what kind of came out of the process. We want it to be quaint and walkable and be somewhere special. Would you follow the comp plan with zoning ordinance backing and especially on your vacant parcels and rezone some of them? You can choose the density maximum at that time. You can choose the allowed uses at that time. And so if, if multifamily is not right for some of these pieces, we won't zone them that way. And, you know, if, you know, Eastern Gateway is, is one of your highest intensity, you know, with five stories. It's, you know, it's on the edge of town. It's on the east side. It's on Blue Mound and it's got access to the highway. And in terms of impacts to the internal circulation of Saginaw, it's probably not gonna have that much. But you can evaluate it either per proposal basis, depending on how we structure it on the zoning side, or, you know, we need to change the overall vision of that now. But in terms of what we are discussing today, it's height, character, and intensity and not necessarily density, but.
So what's the difference between intensity and density?
Oh, I love this question. Okay, so intensity has to do with, think of activity. So if you have, you know, fifteen dwelling units, right? And you all, but you have a, a school and a Walmart in the same area, I would much rather have the fifteen dwelling units. That's a less intensity than a school and a Walmart. So when you're looking at height and character, that's reflecting intensity. So, you know, in the West McLroy Corridor designation, the pictures portray something very quiet and calm and quaint. And so that's the intensity that you're gonna portray through your zoning regulations. But that doesn't necessarily equate to density. You can have a very high-density project on a small parcel and it fits in just fine. No traffic impacts. It's, it blends nicely, supports the retail, and it's okay. But it just depends.
But I just don't see enough thoroughfares in Saginaw to be able to accomplish that here. Maybe someplace else, but not here, is my, again, my personal opinion.
Do you have a particular, you know, revision to one of the districts that you're proposing this evening, or?
Well, like I said, I just kind of read through this, highlighted. I didn't think about anything specific, but my biggest concern is, you know, seeing the traffic problems that we have now is making sure that, that doesn't get worse. Knowing we just had a water main, major water main leak by my house a couple of months ago. Impeded traffic, shut water down for a day. You know, it, it was an inconvenience. And, you know, the more people that you bring in, I mean, last year during the snowstorm, every transformer, I believe, in the city of Saginaw blew.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, we keep all our homes functioning and we're able to get to and from every location. And the more houses and the more housing we bring in, you know, the worse that's gonna get. And the more strain that's gonna be on our infrastructure. And I just, and since that always seems to be a top priority, you know, for our citizens, our taxpayers who support all of this, you know, I just, I just didn't see a whole lot of, probably as much emphasis on that particular part.
Well, I will say, we set out on this process to make sure that that was addressed. And that's a high priority for people. In addition to every restaurant under the sun wanted in Saginaw, in addition to, you know, every entertainment use under the sun and all the retail and everything, we have to balance those objectives, you know. So if we, we've got a lot of dwelling units in Saginaw already. And I, I would agree with you that the residents are concerned about traffic and we don't, we don't want too much more intensity coming in. So that's what needs to be reflected in the zoning ordinance. But four-story office building, it's not gonna, that's not going to be bad on the, you know, traffic network and all of that. So, you know, maybe think of it as a form, form today in terms of, you know, how tall a structure could be and think of it like office. And then, once we follow with zoning ordinance updates, that's kind of where the rubber would meet the road in terms of density discussions and what type of uses you would wanna allow specifically.
So, Rick or Gabe, talking about that center, thinking of that, and I brought it up at the last one too, is when, when this gets passed, I'm, I'm assuming that the first thing to hit is these zoning changes and zoning ordinance changes. I mean, how quick are y'all gonna be able to turn that? Because to me, the big thing I wanna do is get, get ahead of it because we do have, I mean, we're to tell in to build out. And so the way I look at it is we're to tell in. We, we can be picky now. You know, we don't, we don't have to go to, we, we got a little piece and we can be very picky about what we want to go in there. So it seems like to me, we would immediately want to get these zoning changes in so that that will then start pushing all the developers and stuff in the direction we wanna go.
Yeah, Mayor and Counsel, that's a great point. And in fact, that's a project I recommended for discussion, a future item that the council should consider city-initiated rezoning. So there's two ways a rezoning would happen, the applicant or the property owner or the city. So the majority of our remaining residential property is already zoned and entitled. And in fact, if you take a drive, you know, you'd see, you see it's under construction. So the few parcels that are not being developed right now, I think it's important, to Abra's point, to make sure they fit the character of the adjacent neighborhoods. And, you know, things like the corner of, like McLroy, the commercial corner, McLroy and Old Decatur, that area. The, the bigger projects that are underway now are already zoned and entitled. Belt Mill, the corner of Bailey-Boswell and Blue Mound. Miss White's property, the Western Center project, which will include a future extension of Western Center, so. But I think those remaining parcels are really important to get right and work with the property owners to, to fit the vision. Or Counsel, other questions for Abra or any questions about the comprehensive plan? When did we start this? I can't remember.
It was about a year ago. So a little bit more than a year now that we had, we missed a meeting. But we started it in January, February of twenty twenty-one.
You said a year and you're about right.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Abra. Appreciate it.
No problem. No problem.
Our council, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt the comprehensive plan in its entirety.
I'll second it.
Second, all those in favor raise your hand. So thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Well done, folks, and I appreciate all the citizens as well that did, did a lot of work on this. Item number nine, presentation and discussion of City of Saginaw's American Rescue Plan Act Funding Award. For that, Kim Quinn, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, this is going to be a really brief presentation, we just want to get you thinking about projects that we can use the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funding for. The city received an allocation from the federal government of over six million dollars. It's going to be paid in two tranches. We received the first half of it, a little over three million, last summer, and we anticipate the remaining amount in this next, this next summer. As you would expect, and we learned this the hard way through the CARES Act funding that we received in twenty twenty, that went through the county, this is coming directly from the federal government to the city, but there are a lot of hoops to jump through when the federal government gives you six million dollars. And they, it's also surprising that they start giving away money before they decide on the final rules that you have to follow to spend the money. So we got the final ruling in January, we hope it's the final ruling, it can still be amended, but what we're working with now is, they're calling it the final ruling in January, we are referred to as a non-entitled unit of government in NEU, and what that is, is we're basically considered a small city, a population of under fifty thousand. And so, one of the things that they're doing for NEUs is, in their final judgment, they gave us the option of using a category, so there are different categories in which you justify using this money. And what they're allowing NEUs to do is if your award is under ten million dollars, you can claim it as a revenue loss. And that category is the most flexible use, and what they're defining, or what you're allowed to use it for, if you say that you're, if you're using the revenue loss replacement category, is that you can basically use it on any service that we would, that a government would normally provide. Any type of, any type of project or service that we would normally provide, that you can do it. Think of it like when you're doing your taxes, it's kind of like using the standard deduction versus itemizing, right? So instead of having to justify every dollar, you're, they're basically saying, you're under ten million, we're using the revenue loss replacement category, as long as you follow certain rules and you're spending it on something, a service, or a project that you would normally provide, then that's allowed. So that's the direction that we're heading in. There are a few things that are no-nos, even if you're using the revenue replacement, the revenue loss replacement, and those are things like we can't spend it on debt service, we can't replenish fund balance, we can't use it for pensions, and we can't reduce our tax rate and make up for it with ARPA funds. So that's, that's the direction that we're heading in, we're going to use the revenue replacement category, and that will give us the most flexibility. And the next slide then is just some options, some things that we're thinking about that could possibly be used. The first project there was originally brought to you by the bond committee, and I think it was like number four on the list for the bond committee. It didn't make the bond election, and originally it was like five point eight million, I've done inflation factor, and again, this is just a really rough estimate, it's close to about six point seven million, I think, if we wanted to look at our current dollar estimate. We might want to consider at least doing some design or thinking about it, originally it was just a conceptual plan, but as we start building the library and senior center and this becomes vacant, this might be a great funding source, because currently there's, there's no funding source identified for renovating that building and making it usable.
So, just to add, the thought is to potentially start design this summer, so that when the new library's built and vacated, the council would have the option to go ahead and bid the renovation for next door. That has been identified as future space needs, but primarily for public works. So the current public works facility is, has been patched together a number of times, the crews would remain there, but most staff would go next door as a city hall annex. I think that at some point in the future, we may consider an expansion of the animal shelter, which would likely be another, that'd be a separate bond project, but, you know, we have the land off of Brandle Lane now, although that facility is, it, it's not worth fixing at this point. So structurally, the, the library is in decent shape, it probably needs a, a new roof, and I love when architects present, because they use terms I'm not so familiar with, so I'm going to drop an architectural term, but a new skin, it needs a new skin. Wish I was as smooth as Bren, he, he beats us all in fancy talk, but anyway, we'll need it for space needs, so, again, the building's not designed, I do believe we need to consider design, we may even consider, you may consider at some point, have in council chambers next door, where we can entertain a, a larger group gathering, so just something to consider. Randy Newsom's not here tonight, but if he was here, he would be had in hand, saying please, because the current facility is, it needs to be addressed at some point.
Another item on the list is the funding for the Northwest Booster Pump Station. When that was originally estimated, we had impact fee funding available for it, so we have over four hundred, about four hundred thirty-two thousand in impact fees, but the current estimate, the latest I got from Kim Lee Horn was about one point four million, which means we're going to be short by about nine hundred and seventy thousand for that project. So this would be a.
And that's the one inside of Belt Mill?
Yes, the Northwest, I don't know where it's located.
No, sir, it's, it's not, it's.
Northwest.
It's by Park Center, by William Houston Park, so it'll be located just underneath the tower, and it's really to serve the square. Same issue that, that happened on Belt Mill, that we have low pressures on the northwest side of the city, so that will boost those pressures.
The Belt Mill one you, you, was it last council meeting or the meeting before that? So that was funded with fund balance to be reimbursed by the TERS at some point. And then the other project on the horizon is the Fairmont Twelve-Inch Sewer, the Phase Two. We completed the first phase, I think it was in twenty twenty, because that was the worst, worst part, but, so these, and then we're going to work with Kim Lee Horn and update the CIP, so there could be other things identified, but these are just some, I guess the top three that came to staff, staff mind. The other thing you need to keep in mind is the, we have deadlines, and so the funds, the total amount, needs to be obligated by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, so that means we would have to have entered into a construction contract or whatever, obligated the funds, and they have to be completely spent two years after that, so by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six.
I do, forward to many questions, I do have a, a request to speak on that. Mr. Shad, do you want to speak on this item?
Can you answer my question?
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, so, Council, questions? Questions, comments, concerns on ARPA? So when do we need to make a decision on some of these things? What's our, what are we thinking timing-wise? Not tonight, but at what point do we need to really?
The intent tonight was to bring this to your attention so that we can begin thinking about it as we, so our next meeting will kind of do our high-level kickoff of budget year twenty-three, so, other than the commitments of when the funds need to be obligated and spent, those are the hard deadlines, but I'm confident we'll be way ahead of that, so, as far as priority, though, the public works facility, I think this is a great opportunity to at least begin a design, that doesn't mean we're going to construct, and these other projects referenced, you know, need attention as well.
Sure.
It'll, it'll kind of tie into the budget process, too, as the next meeting we'll start talking about high-level issues, and, and so that might continue the discussion. Really, the first deadline is the end of April, our first report needs to be uploaded to the Treasury, and that just, we'll just, we just need to then identify which category of funds we're going to use, and like I said before, it just makes the most sense to use the revenue loss category.
All right, Council, so we'll be more, we'll, more discussions to follow on this. Any questions in the future, you know, you think, please contact staff as we start to develop this plan? But it's a great opportunity with some, do some good things in the city. So anything else? All right, let's, let's move on, so item number nine, so item number ten, and no, yeah, there's no action on item number nine. Item number ten, Board and Commission Workshop Discussion, so who's going to lead that?
That's you?
Yep. Mayor, I move that we table this, because we haven't done anything with it.
Okay. Fair enough.
That's a good answer.
I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we.
Oh, you have a question? Go ahead.
I was, I have a suggestion that we go ahead and discuss the, whether or not this, this city council would like to do away with the alternate position on the commissions or keep them. That's something that doesn't require study from our committee, and my proposal would be that any boards and commissions that do specify alternates in the ordinance, if, if this body as a whole decides we don't want alternates, let's say a committee has five regulars and two alternates, then they would just have seven regular people instead of five and two alternates, you would just have seven. That would be my suggestion.
Can we wait and do it with the?
You don't have to bring it over, I know what's going on, so, I, we have somebody that wants to speak on this item, I think a potential subject matter expert.
Well, let me, so, so the one thing is, for me as council, I'm, I'd need to do, to me in order to support that, I would have to talk to people like you, who's chairmans over these committees, and really understand what it is, so that's why I would really like to, to not vote on it today and table it and then push it off, and so that we can get all of our, I'm a big guy, I get, like to get all the data and all the facts in place so that we can make a.
So you're suggesting that perhaps some of the boards would want to keep the.
That's right, and I'd like to reach out to them.
And we would want to talk to them.
Right, absolutely, I, I think it's, I think it's right.
I appreciate that.
We, we have a board chair here, so what's your thoughts, sir?
Bright St. Clair, four twenty-one Creek Terrace, thank you for giving me the opportunity, Mayor. I love having alternates, because these are volunteer boards, and people have lives and they're not able to make every meeting, and if you eliminate the alternate position, you increase the quorum requirement for these boards, and so the boards sometimes wouldn't be able to hold meetings due to the fact that sometimes there's not enough people there. So the alternates serve as kind of a, a shoring up of the quorum requirement without having to officially be a part of that quorum, and I think it's a great mechanism to leave it in place, because it's a volunteer position, and you just don't get the participation that you do at city council meetings, so.
I appreciate that comment, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposing that, but another thing to think of is that, you know, some of these boards, the alternates are stuck in the alternate position for years, and I just thought it would be nice to have them have the full ability to be a full representative. The other thing is, one of the things we've already put in place is for our city council to look very carefully at attendance before we renew someone on a committee, so I don't see that there would be a problem of attendance that much with that in mind, and that, you know, if people aren't going to attend the meetings, they should not be on the committee.
Absolutely.
So, I'm just show, I'm just, but I, I agree with Nick and probably Cindy, too, that we need more study as a committee to recommend, but I think we have several things to consider, there's reasons to have the alternates and there's reasons not to. And I think it would be good to talk to the other chairman of the other committees, as Nick suggested.
And I, I feel like I was an alternate for three or four years before I got on full-time, but that didn't dampen, I mean, when Charles was chairman, or Charles was chairman, I never felt like I was excluded, I was always a part of the discussion, I couldn't vote, but my concerns were heard, and I try to run that at, at the park board meetings now, I, I don't exclude the alternates, I encourage input from them, the exchange of ideas is very important to me, so, because I, I, I want to get a lot of different perspectives. So I think it's, it's doing a disservice if you treat your alternates like, well, you don't get a say until you're officially on. It's, it's a good learning curve for everybody, it allows them to get acquainted with things without having to vote on it, so they can kind of listen and, and learn, and it, it doesn't ramp up quite as fast, I feel.
Okay, that's really good input, and you have more patience than I do, and I would not have wanted to be an alternate for three, for years, but, you know, I think I certainly would be willing to go along with whatever the council would, would want to do as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Bright. All right, so I think I'll entertain a motion to table.
Mayor, I make a motion that we table this until.
How about just TBD? TBD.
Okay, whenever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cindy, all those in favor raise your hand. Excellent, thank you, guys. We look forward to hearing from you in the future. Item number eleven, Physical Year Twenty Twenty-Two Work Plan Discussion, for that, City Manager, Gabe Ram.
So Mayor and Council, it's time to consider the priorities for the city that you established for us for twenty twenty-two. I have nothing new to present to you, what I would like to walk away with is a project list that everybody agrees are the priorities, we will bring that back to the council, be adopted by a resolution, and then we'll get to work. So I'm going to summarize what I've been told.
Keith, can we put this up on the screen? Do you have it somewhere?
If I can find it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just go to the summary. So, so these are all the projects, and these came from either past projects that have been set in motion or discussions with individual council members. The only two additions that we had talked about at our, the last time we talked about this, was a home renovation incentive program and a pilot program to address the issues with feral cats. So again, all I'm looking to, to hear from you is some general consensus that these are the right projects, these are the priorities, we will bring it to you in a resolution, and then go from there. So happy to talk through, answer any questions, discuss.
Sir?
I wanted to see the ordinance review.
Uh-huh.
Is that on here, or no? Because, I mean, like, every department, I don't know how we would do it, but we just need to start reviewing and looking at all of our ordinance, I don't know if that's like ten every six months, or.
Yeah.
How we do that, but that's just something I think needs to be added.
Yeah, I agree, the one that came up in discussion was specific to code enforcement, so code enforcement ordinance review and recommended.
That'll be like the first one then.
Changes, yeah, that would be the focus. Another code enforcement-related item, and this has been successful in past years, is to pick a focus area and say, okay, code is going to focus staff effort in a, a specific area, so if, if that's a project y'all want to pursue, I'll bring back a recommendation, we'll figure out the, you know, the, the general area. We'll figure out the, you know, the, the general area. So, um, good, good question, yep.
I, I got one, these all look, look good to me. Let's get to work. Uh, the, uh, one I was thinking as we was doing the comprehensive plan, a big, big thing in there is our parks and recs and our, our parks and stuff like that. So, uh, I, I guess one, when is our long comprehensive plan for our parks and what, how are we gonna, is that something we need to tackle?
That should be on the next park board agenda, uh, I believe next month, right? Next month?
Next month.
This month, yeah. It's March, sorry. So that should come to the council the, the following week unless we have major rewrites, which I wouldn't expect.
So it's a good point. Our comprehensive plan, our parks master plan, um, they're guiding documents, not binding as we talk to the comprehensive plan discussion, but they will generate potential projects. So one of the projects from the comprehensive plan was to initiate rezonings-
Right.
-of parcels. So I think once the parks, uh, board meets, there may be some opportunity there.
Yeah. So should like the rezoning be put on here?
Uh, I have that listed as a project.
Oh, okay.
So, um, city initiation of undeveloped par- parcels, which, you know, we're down to a handful at this point really that are undeveloped, um, corridors.
What about the, like, like they talked about Saginaw Main, you know, I think it was, she done left this.
Yeah.
The four stories, things like that, things like that. Does that also have to be rezoned?
Um-
To encourage that?
It could be. So difference between, um, greenfield or brand new development and redevelopment. So with a few exceptions, Saginaw Boulevard is essentially developed. There's very few raw land left. So this would be focused, uh, on the raw land parcels. So the one that pops into my mind would be, uh, the corner of Old Decatur and, um, West McElroy. So tho- those corners are undeveloped. They will develop at some point in the future.
So how do we re, how do we encourage? I mean, I, I see this work, I'm such a thing, how to, one, protect the raw land and make sure it moves in a direction, two is to revitalize or to move-
Sure.
-our pre-existing areas that, that we want to upscale, if you will, into the right direction.
So green field development or new development is, uh, pretty simple.
Right.
You, you have a blank slate. When you talk to, about redevelopment, very difficult. Um, and the property owners have vested rights, legal rights to continue the use they have.
Oh, we understand that.
So, um, I think it would be helpful and we're kind of addressing blighted structures on Saginaw Boulevard. You recall that demolition?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, if that's a desire to identify an area where we wanna focus in on. You know, I can think of as far as redevelopment wise, around Taco Casa, that kinda corner of the boulevard, it likely needs to redevelop. Uh, and already has, so we've got Planet Fitness coming, um, or sorry, Planet Fitness is there as council members well aware, that's, uh, right out his-
He's not gonna get to use his swimming pool with the sun.
Right, yeah. So redevelopment's tough. I think kinda like the code enforcement, you pick a defined area and say, okay, this is our focus. And redevelopment, um, a lot of times has to take extra effort, whether that's incentives or city initiation, what have you.
And part, that's probably the reason we, we passed our overlay ordinance a couple of years ago is to move the boulevard in that direction, yeah, in a long term.
So one of the big pieces that the city has full control and I, I, uh, put this is, uh, um, talking about the redevelopment of the current central fire station. So that whole block would be available for some use in the future, you know, probably or potentially a destination type restaurant or an entertainment, you know, the sorts of things that people tell you, why don't we have them here? A lot easier to get things done when you own the land and control it. You've seen all the comments and, you know, why is this or that coming? Well, property owners have rights, but if you own the property, then you can control it.
You make the right.
Yeah.
Could you explain again what a formal pavement management system is?
Yes. So we're getting our money's worth out of the good people of Kimley Horn this, uh, this evening. I may pitch that to Trent.
Uh, yeah, so we've actually started that process. We've collected all the data for the streets. Um, we're in the process of creating a, um, online dashboard where, uh, Randy and Rick can kind of project out how the pavement's gonna look in five to 10 years and then, um, kinda piece together what, um, their goals are for the pavement, uh, quality and what kind of associated budgets would achieve that.
Well, won't be our goals, it'll be what your goals are, but, but you'll have data driven, you'll have data to make those decisions. I mean, we, we've had the same amount in the street maintenance budget for years and with inflation, you know, we're going downhill. So, uh, the, what this will be able to answer is if you wanna, uh, let's say, you know, a, a pavement quality index is, is a, a kind of an index that, that tells you what the condition of your street from excellent to, to poor, needing total reconstruction. Uh, y- you know, maybe the council's goal is that, you know, we want 70% of our streets to be in, in good condition, you know, from excellent to good. And so pavement management will allow us to project the cost and what type of annual budget we need to apply. Of course, we'll be, we've decided that, that this, we will have a, based on a three year cycle, uh, have recommendations and it'll be more strategic management. So streets that are in today in excellent or, or good condition, then there would be, uh, things like crack ceiling and things of that nature that are preventive, preventive and more, uh, proactive, uh, maintenance versus, uh, uh, what most of our maintenance projects go to today and that's really total, total reconstruction. Uh, you know, removal of the surface and restabilization of the ba, of the subgrade and rebuilding the project, uh, those streets. So wanna have a mix, wanna kinda preserve where we're at, uh, cause over the long term, uh, you save money, uh, uh, for that. It's like your house, you know, if you wanna, if you wanna defer maintenance, at some point you gotta pay the piper and it's gonna be much more expensive, uh, after you have a bunch of rotten wood. So we wanna, you know, we wanna keep the rotten wood from occurring and that's what this pavement management system will allow us to project and answer those questions for the council. So then the onus will be on you, you know, how, how serious it wanna be about, uh, uh, you know, maintaining some level of, uh, of quality in our payments.
So we could take that data, we could overlay it and we could say, okay, this is how our streets are aging and then we could actually use that to see how much funds we will have to spend to keep the streets in a certain condition.
Yeah, we can say, you know, if you dedicate this much money over the next three years, then we can move from a quality index of 60 to, to 80 or, or, you know, that's probably unrealistic, but you, you know what, that's the point is that you can project kinda what this is gonna look like down the road with dollars invested today in this year's budget.
And the analysis helps you optimize those dollars. So kinda what he's alluding to is it's easy to focus on the streets that are falling apart, but you really get the best bang for your buck focusing on the streets that were built in the last five years, keeping those at a really high level quality-
Right.
-at a cheaper cost.
So Gabe, council, I guess, if we approve this, can, can we get a, a estimate that maybe you have to break these down into, uh, you know, phase one, phase two?
Yeah.
I don't know, some of them you may, some of them you don't, but can we get an estimate in, say 30 days, uh, how this is gonna look and then-
Sure.
-once a month get a report?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, so if these are the right projects, this list, then I can sort of figure out, um, you know, who's gonna be the project owner department wise and then we'll figure out the kind of milestones.
What is the, uh, I'm sorry, what is the police department accreditation? What is that?
The chief was napping until now, so he just woke up.
I wanted to hear his voice.
So you're talking about accreditation. Um, we've started the application process. However, uh, Texas Police Chiefs Association, they're not doing any kind of audits right now and so we're kinda at their mercy. Most of our policies are done. We have about 30 policies left to meet the best practice standards. And so as we move forward with presenting those to the, uh, TPCA, it's just a matter of them actually showing up on site, doing their audits and, and we're probably still looking at close to a year with their delays. So our policies will be completely in place, uh, by the time they start their audits, but that's kind of what we're waiting on now.
You said audits like plural, so multiple audits?
It's one or two visits that they do, but you have a, uh, auditor that's assigned to you that'll come in and, and start reviewing everything and they try to do that in kinda one step, you know, a couple of days to a week long. Uh, but there are agencies that experience, you know, multiple visits as part of that audit process, so.
Thank you, chief.
Gabe, you were saying something, uh, one of the items that weren't on the list was a house renovation. Can you expound on that a little?
Yeah, uh, talked with the mayor pro tem. Uh, that was an idea to encourage, um, uh, owner occupied homes to probably primarily meet minimum code requirements, uh, exterior things, uh, but maybe put in some incentives that would encourage, uh, like a rehab or renovation. So there's, um, there's pretty successful models throughout the metroplex of how to do that, uh, and encourage, you know, you can waive fees, you can provide, uh, free dumpster service or dumpster service at city costs just to encourage, uh, improvement for owner occupied, uh-
Okay.
-homes, uh, and especially those that may not meet minimum property standards for code issues, whether that's paint or, you know, um, eaves or what have you, roofing repairs, that sort of thing, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So you gonna add that or?
Yeah, that, yeah, that and the feral, uh, cat pilot program were the two that are not before you-
Okay.
-that we have, we've talked about, so, yeah, considering those.
Great.
And I'd like to add to Nick's recommendation. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Uh, I'd like to kinda, you know, along with the prioritization of these is what are we looking at for the, the, uh, scope of this task? Is it, are we looking, will we be able to finish this year? Will we be able to finish it next year? That sort of thing. And if we, you just use the, um, like the Yelp, um, restaurant designations, you know, is it one, two, three, four dollars?
Sure.
Uh, and then just have a range, what we estimate and we understand it's not gonna be hard, but it kinda gives us a, a little better picture of what we're gonna be facing.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, lay this out in such a way that, you know, we're not trying to handle too many projects at the same time. So just kinda map that out for us so it makes it a little clearer, a little, little easier for us to understand, a little easier for you to manage.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's great feedback and the intent is to, to have a manageable amount that we can, uh, tackle and, and deliver within the, uh, calendar year. So, um, and then once we, again, if we decide these are the right projects, have those milestones so that we know we're making progress or what the next major moves are. Many of these things are already kinda set in motion. We've talked about, um, the Knowles Phase One was just awarded, so that'll be, uh, going on, the Library Senior Center ongoing, but yeah, we can get that to you.
I don't see the bridge on here.
Well, the, the bridge has pushed Rick to retirement and I'll, I'll public, I'll publicly beg him again to reconsider, to extend. There was talk of a second bridge, so that adds another 10 years to your career.
Well, you know, they're calling it the new Saginaw Arches on Facebook. Yeah.
The arch, archway will more, yeah, or something.
Yeah.
Are any of the questions for Gabe? Any other comments? Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. So no action required on that one. So at, uh, 7:43, uh, we are in executive session pursuant to Texas government code 551-071 and 551-078 and 551-074. We will return to adjournment.
Right, of course.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Charles second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Those oppose? Alright.
Motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned?
I'll adjourn.
At nine oh five we're done.
I think I get to move.
Janice, you get everything?
(laughing)
Alright. Alright.
...